Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Stratford City Council. We'll begin this evening's meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. I'll turn the meeting over to the clerk.
Through your worship, item two is declarations of pecuniary interest. Are there any declarations? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing, oh, council gaffing.
Thank you, worship. I have two to declare. Item nine point two point one and item nine point two point two both having to do with for forty two fifty three per line thirty six. I have a ownership interest in a buddy property.
Thank you. Anything further? All right.
Item three is adoption of the minutes, and there is a motion that the minutes of the special meeting dated June sixth and the regular meeting dated June thirteenth be adopted as printed.
Let's move by councillor Vassalakos. And seconded by councillor Burbak. Thank you. Discussion. All those in favor? Thank you.
Item four is adoption of the addendum, and prior to today's meeting, two addendums were prepared. And there is a motion that be addendum to the regular agenda of council to add receipt of correspondence to item nine point one point one. And receipt of correspondence to the planning and heritage committee agenda be added to the agenda as printed.
Councillor Henderson moves and councillor Bunting seconds. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Post Fanny, that's carried.
Item five is report of the committee of the whole and camera session and item five point one. At the June thirteenth session under the municipal act as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered. And that was item five point one appointment to Festival Hydro Inc. and Festival Hydro Services, Inc. Board of Directors. And that was under the personal matters about an identifiable individual exemption. And there is a staff recommendation that John Tapix and Jerry Guthrie be reappointed to the Festival Hydro, Inc. Board of Directors for a four year term. Or until a successor is appointed by Stratford City Council. And that Jerry Guthrie be reappointed to the Festival Hydro Services, Inc. Board of Directors for a four year term or until a successor is appointed by Stratford City Council.
All right, move by councillor BD, seconded by councillor Bunting. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Post Fanny, that's carried.
Item five point two is also from the June thirteenth meeting where the following matter was considered, and that was item four point two. Land negotiation update, and that was under the following exemptions proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality or local board. Advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. And a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of municipality. And there is a staff recommendation that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the temporary road construction and license agreement. With two zero nine one one nine two Ontario Limited for the construction of a temporary road extension to connect alone Avenue to McCarthy Road West.
Move by councillor Ritzman, second by councillor Ingram. Discussion. All those in favor? Post Fanny, that's carried.
Item five point three at the June twentieth session under the municipal act as amended amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered, and that was item three point one. Proposed development on municipally owned parcels of land. And that was considered under the following exemptions proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality or local board. Advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. And a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of municipality. And at that in camera session, direction was given on this matter. Moving to item five point four, just prior to today's meeting, a cave the whole in camera session was held to consider the following item. Item four point one proposed disposition of land in the Crane West Business Park. And that was considered under the proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land exemption. And at the in camera session, direction was given.
Thank you.
Moving to item six hearings of deputations and presentations, item six point one is a delegation request from the Avon Maitland District School Board. And there is a motion that the delegation of Hugh Cox on behalf of the Avon Maitland District School Board with respect to a signed by law variance be heard.
That is moved by councillor Gaffney and seconded by councillor Vassalakos. Discussion. All those in favor? And that's carried. We'll just bring Mr. Cox into the meeting here. Good evening, Mr. Cox.
Hello.
Turn it over to you.
Sure, and I believe there's a presentation that can be displayed.
I believe the clerk is working on it now.
Yep. Okay, so my name is Hugh Cox. I'm the facilities administrator with the Avon Maitland School Board. Thank you for a moment of your time to address the council, your worship, Matheson and councillors. Regarding the sign variance application at four twenty eight Forman Ave known as Stratford District Secondary School. Next slide. So this is a layout of the proposed signage. So the variance related to is related to the lower portion of the sign. With the, you see the picture of the students on there. This is an electronic proposed electronic change sign. Measuring ninety six by thirty six inches or approximately two point two meters squared. The current sign in place at the moment is one point four meters squared, and there is a variance on that sign as it stands. Next. Like please. So as background. As most of you are aware, the Stratford District Secondary School was create created from a recent consolidation of nine to twelve students. From the former Stratford Central and Stratford Northwestern Schools. A rebranding of the school as the Golden Bears was impetus for the new sign. Or renewal of the the school sign. These types of signs are increasingly popular. At secondary schools and they are becoming more of an expectation by families more than a convenience. So it's kind of an expectation that schools have these, and I think there's maybe only one secondary school in our our district that doesn't have one from the public side. This sign serves a community of thirteen hundred students each day, as well as community use of schools in the evenings, on weekends, and through the summer months. Next slide, please. Further, the electronic change signs at schools, they're a school funded piece of equipment. As such, they need to take an approach that's economical because the school based budgets are not are not extremely large. Given the need to make the economic choice. And save time to improve the function of the sign, we chose to use the existing sign location as opposed to moving the sign. And as part of that to increase the size of the invisibility of the electronic change sign portion for families and the community. Next slide, please. But we understand the bylaws are in place to protect and represent the public at large. This sign is in place to serve that same contingent. Further, the sign is not an advertising tool for the purpose of commerce, but rather as a public service. As such, we think the variance should be given consideration. The school board respects the city of Stratford and the council's position on the matter, but asks that they contemplate the following in their deliberations. Next slide, please. Bylaw one five nine two thousand four indicates that the change sign can be a maximum of one meter squared. And as I mentioned, the sign that we currently have in place is slightly larger than that, and there's a variance on that. The one meter square size is effective, given the expectation that signs would be located as close to a property line as possible. While adhering to the other bylaw requirements, however, given that the existing sign location at Stratford District Secondary is quite a bit further, as I explained, we're using the existing sign location. From the secondary property lines, the one meter size or anything even just slightly larger is a little bit less effective. As such, we do not believe the bylaw addresses the specific situation as Stratford District Secondary School. Next slide, please. Stratford is Stratford District Secondary School is a well used location by the public. And as I said, it serves over thirteen hundred students. I consider it a similar capacity as the Rotary Complex serving the same community. And as you can see here, the Rotary Complex has quite a bit larger sign. Next slide, please. At Stratford District Secondary School, admittedly, there's some trees and so forth obstructing some visibility from this from the intersection. Of Foreman and Oakdale Ave. However, the distance to the sign from viewable vantage points on the street are over forty meters away, which makes a smaller sign less effective. And at the same time, the distance means a larger sign would have fewer negative impacts on the community. Next slide, please. The sign is also perpendicular Foreman Ave, which is the the street that has most of the housing on it, and it doesn't pose a significant or emit emit or direct a significant amount of light towards the residential area on the east side of Foreman Ave. Even if it was a little larger than the sign is today. Next slide, please. The sign is essentially only effective viewable from the bus circle in front of the school or from the staff and visitor parking on the opposite side. So it's really only viewable or effective from those two areas. Next slide, please. So in summary, we understand the reasoning for the restriction on the proliferation of this style of sign and how it reflects the desire. To maintain the heritage feel in in Stratford. However, we do urge council to consider the specific variance application based on the physical location of the sign. And the community it serves, and we're looking for support for this variance. We're also asking, or I would ask if there's any further clarifications, I'd be happy to provide it. Or if there's some concessions or other modifications we could make to make this workable for the council, then I'd be open to hearing those as well. And so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. We appreciate your time. Is there any questions for Mr. Cox? Councillor Clifford.
Yeah, I'd like to ask, I drove up by there the other day, and I have my home just around the corner alone. Has there been any complaints about the existing sign, Mr. Cox? Like, I I've been by it lots of times, but have papers complained about like the fight or anything about the existing sign?
Existing, the existing sign actually hasn't been functional for approximately a year and a half as we were in transition and we have a contract out to update it, but prior to that time, I have heard no complaints.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Cox, who said, and will come up on a future agenda, and we'll take your presentation into consideration.
Okay, thank you very much.
Adam Clark.
Through your worship, item seven is orders of the day, and item seven point one is a resolution to award a tender, and there is a staff recommendation that the tender T dash twenty twenty two dash sixteen. For the Willow Street Water Main relining contract be awarded to Fur Pal Construction Limited at a total tender price of one million, one hundred and ninety eight thousand seventy one dollars and twenty cents, including HST. And that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the contract agreement.
All right, mover, councillor Vassalakos and councillor Burbak, seconding discussion. All those in favor? Post Fanny, and that's carried.
Item seven point two is a resolution for a special occasion permit, and there is a motion that city council does not express concern with the issuance of a special occasion permit. For the twenty second annual Brian Stipple Memorial Slow Pitch Tournament to be held on September two to four at the Packham Road Sports Complex. Subject to the necessary permits being obtained, compliance with the city's municipal alcohol risk policy and the required certificates of insurance being provided.
Thank you. Ingram is moving seconded by councillor BD. Discussion. All those in favor? Post? It's good.
Item seven point three is a resolution regarding a storm in sanitary sewer easement, and there is a staff recommendation that the corporation of the city of Stratford accept an easement over part three and four, Plan forty four R dash twenty eight hundred from L C I R two Inc. For access to the storm and sanitary sewers, and that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the necessary documents.
Move by councillor Gaffney, second by councillor Ingram. Discussion. All those in favor? Post Fanny, it's carried.
Item seven point four is a report on the municipal accommodation tax update. And there is a motion on your agenda that the report municipal accommodation tax update be received, that a four percent mat rate be authorized, and that the necessary bylaws be brought forward to a future meeting.
Councillor Clifford moving, seconded councillor Bunting. Discussion. Councillor Vassalakos, councillor Ingram, councillor seven.
So I'm I'm actually glad that this came back because the report clearly shows, I mean, this this is being implemented across Ontario. It's implemented across the world and across North America. And it is, it's it's a good revenue tool to help offset some, you know, to help offset some of the costs associated with being a tourist attraction. The one thing I just wanted to talk a little bit about the the reserve fund policy. And I'm hoping, and this is more sort of a discussion around the policy. My concern around sometimes these reserve funds is that it could become. And I, for lack of a better word, more of a slash fund where like council says, oh, we have a, we had this new, you know, you know, shiny project. Let's use this for that. And so what I'm hoping that the policy does is reflects the current infrastructure that we have and the current needs and how we can actually rejuvenate some of our current infrastructure that both residents and and visitors use. And I think that can reflect both something like road conditions where we have a beautiful new theater. Wouldn't it be nice if some of this money could go to making beautiful new roads for the tourists to to visit? Or if we're, you know, if we're pursuing a tourist, a sport tourism strategy, looking at some of our existing community facilities and upgrading, putting money into upgrading them. That's not to say I'm not, that's not to say I don't think this reserve fund should make allowances for new infrastructure. I'm just hoping that whatever that is is very strategic. It's prescribed based on a strategy, overall strategy, and again, it doesn't become suddenly this money where we're just, you know, future councils are have leave to use it to build new things that we then don't have the ability to operate or maintain or replace. So that's just more of my sort of thoughts around that policy when it comes back to us.
All right. Thank you very much, councillor Vassalakos. Councillor Ingram and councillor seven.
Thank you. I'd just like to offer a friendly amendment to the second piece, which says that information regarding timing and other key messages be distributed to businesses via the Engage Stratford platform and via Destination Stratford. I'd also like to include the BIA in that as well as a communication body.
Okay, the mover and seconder agree to that? Yes, thank you. All right, we'll look, stab that in. Councillor seven.
Thank you. So I don't, I don't support the motion on the floor. I think it's mentioned in the report, just the increase in prices, especially for people who are staying multiple weeks or any number that's under a month. I've heard from multiple accommodators that this isn't. This isn't what they would like to see. I have also concern that we're going with the maximum four percent. But I M A T. My other concern is the amount that is going to Destination Stratford, especially in the initial years when we're not reducing the the city funding. I think it could could stand for quite a short time. I'm not sure. I'd rather see that shifted, but I guess I would for the moment prefer this to be option one in the report, which is to direct staff to pause activities until after the election, and I think I think that would be important. I think we haven't had this for so long. I think it would make sense to you know, wait another year at least and see what the new council thinks. I think it would be a good opportunity to to make this for for people who are running for council, for people who are voting, to make this something that is talked about, and certainly there's no more no more engagement in municipal politics than there is during an election. So I think it would be a great opportunity to hear from the most people we can on the issue and certainly, you know, see how that support or for the M A T translates during the election, and we are very close to a period where issues like this are not going to be. We won't be able to make the changes like this, so I think I I would prefer that we wait until after the new council is sworn in. So I don't support the current motion.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Bunting.
Yes, I most certainly do support this very strongly. So this has been on the table for several years now. I was only put on hold because of COVID. I I would like to thank the staff for the extensive report and the investigation and the communications with Destination Stratford. That have led to this particular place. I to postpone this to another year would, in my mind, be ludicrous. However, having said that, I would just one question is to maybe staff. The July first date of being authorized, just if someone could just explain how that came to be.
Ms. Krug.
Thank you through the chair. We did give this quite a lot of thought as far as the rollout and, you know, it's considered sooner, considered later, and just kind of landed on the middle of twenty twenty three as long enough to allow the city to get the short term accommodation licensing bylaw in place and and also have enough time to communicate some of the effects of this that aren't haven't already been communicated to the accommodators and to the to the public. But not so long that it was going to be like far enough into the twenty, the twenty, like far enough past the the end of this year that it it would be subject to changes or revisiting or whatever. Still, obviously, it could be, but it was just to kind of keep keep the momentum going and not deferring it past twenty twenty three in total. I think the other piece that I kind of liked with the middle of twenty twenty three was that it gives us a half a year where we're not budgeting for reliance on that funding. But we're able to sort of get it, get a flavor of how it's going to go so that we can then better plan going into future years.
Thank you very much.
Well, I I know I hear from the public and we've had emails, phone calls, and we've seen it on Twitter, Facebook, different things of of how people feel the city shouldn't be funding the tourism and, you know, and of course, I know the background of how it went left the city and went on its own and stuff, but um. This will appease, I think, quite a few residents that want to see this come off the tax bill. And so I was pleased that staff was able to bring it back. I understand there's no way we could do it in the last two years because of COVID, but now that, I guess, two and a half years. Now that we're coming out of the COVID and heading forward and we we've already had meetings on this and we've had, you know, reports from people on it and what they thought. I read the reports and I think that's doc and Destination Tourism have put a lot of thought into this, and it's still going to take some time to get it going, and it's got to come back to us, but still. To stop it for what, six more months? No. Yeah, at least six more months, and then that's going to put it off longer to implement it. So anyway, I'm in support of what they bought. And I think the residents would be quite pleased with that.
Thank you. Councillor seven.
Thank you. I just, just given the the significance of this, I just wanted to request a recorded vote.
Sure. Anything else? Councillor Vassalakos.
I just want to piggyback a little on something like councillor Henderson said. I think what I like about the municipal compensation tax and some of the rules that go around it. It's that it's to make improvements that both the residents and tourists can actually benefit from. And so it may be one of the things that we implement that start to actually shift away from the S and M and this and that. And it's, you know, people realizing that that there's, you know, you know, the residential tax pay contributes to our our community facilities and our roads, but so do the tourists, and this can be a complimentary thing. And and I will reiterate, I have yet to travel in the last decade where I haven't actually paid this just about anywhere across Ontario or North America or even Europe. So I I don't think this will become as a surprise to most people who travel.
All right. Well, I would just say that under the municipal act, until August nineteenth, we're not in lame duck. So what we are doing is completing business that this council started over two and a half years ago. And I think that it's important that we do it, and I think deferring it till after an election is just abdicating our responsibility on a project we started prior to the pandemic. So I'm quite comfortable moving forward. All right, we'll call the question. I believe it's been requested a recorded vote, so I'll turn it back to clerk.
So through your worship, beginning with councillor seven, please state whether you are in support or opposed to the motion. Councillor seven. Councillor Bunting. You're muted.
Beg your pardon, sorry. Support.
Councillor Vassalakos.
Support.
Councillor Ingram.
What?
Councillor Burbak.
Support.
Mayor Masterson.
Support.
Councillor Henderson.
Support.
Councillor BD.
Support.
Councillor Ritzma.
Support.
Councillor Clifford.
Support.
Councillor Gaffney.
Support.
So through your worship, there is ten, ten in support and one opposed. There are no members absent, and there are no declarations of pecuniary interest on this item.
Thank you. I'll declare that motion carried. We'll go to the next item.
Item eight is business for which previous notice has been given, and there was none scheduled. So moving to item nine, reports of the standing committees. Item nine point one is the report of the Infrastructure, Transportation and Safety Committee, and there were three items listed for consideration. The first being item nine point one point one, continued promotion of active transportation through Lakeside Drive Lane closures. And I would just note the additional motion on the addenda to receive the correspondence from the Active Transportation Advisory Committee. Item nine point one point two is the Airport Operations Management Contract, and item nine point one point three is the new Ontario firefighter certifications.
If I could, I think councillor Vassalakos's chair will move, but she's going to ask that item nine one one be taken separately. All right, and there's a mover then for item nine one two and nine one three. Councillor Henderson, you'll second that. All right, we'll deal with item nine one two and item nine one three. Discussion. Not all those in favor? Post Fanny, that's carried. Item nine one one. Under a procedural bylaw would have a motion to file, but councillor Vassalakos wanted to try one more motion. I know it's been listed by the clerk, but I'll turn it over.
I would like to actually move a slightly modified committee recommendation that we had from on the last meeting and that it's the same committee recommendation that we've listed a committee, except with a modification that rather than it starting July fourth. That it the it would start as soon as staff have received the Ballard equipment that they need to order and are ready to launch the 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 program. And if I can get a second or I'd like to speak to promotion.
Councillor Burbak would second that. Go ahead, councillor Vassalakos.
So I just want to make a couple of comments because I chaired the last meeting, and often the chair doesn't get a kick at the can at supporting something. So I'm going to try here. I do realize that COVID is over for a lot of people, but COVID isn't over, but we also understand that COVID outside isn't as big an issue as closed, you know, confined quarters and crowds. But I will say that COVID taught us a few lessons, and even if these closures aren't for COVID. We can take something that we did during COVID that was very popular. It was well received. I got only positive feedback about the road closures and a lot of appreciation from the public. And I think that's one of the reasons that staff brought it back in the staff report and the conversation at subcommittee was around that. And I will also add that Stratford Summer Music happens in that month. Doc music is also including, there's already road closures for that. And there's, there are lots of reasons why trying the road closure. It is is worth it. I will add that the ballards that staff are hoping to buy and 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 put in and install really do increase the safety along the closure. So I don't, I don't have a lot of safety issues around it. What I do also will note that in subcommittee, we had a discussion around the fact that these ballards are actually quite useful for other road closures and other events that we may have. So even though there's a cost associated with first purchasing some of these ballards, we will have plenty of opportunities to use them for other events and other road closures and things like that. So I think they're a really good investment for increasing the safety of some of the closures that we do. And the other part of it is, is I do really like councillor Ingram had made the suggestion about making it a pilot study to start to look at, you know, traffic flow, how things move, how well it's received. you know, traffic flow, how things move, how well it's received, because it was part of our original bike and pedestrian master plan. We have talked at length in the past about how we can make the river and the park system more cycling friendly. How do we reduce conflicts between cars and bikes? How do we reduce conflicts between bicycles and pedestrians? Because there's the hierarchy of vulnerable road users. And this is a really good opportunity to have, you know, we have lots of pedestrians in the summer. And during the high, high season that can use the multi-use path, we can reduce conflicts with cyclists by um providing a safe space for people to cycle along, along there. And then also we still provide road access. So I am really hoping that we can sort of reconsider um the vote that happened at, at committee and, and think about doing this for at least the month of August and collect some data and get some, some experience that we can maybe use for a future study on active transportation around the park system.
Thank you.
And that was really long and I apologize.
It's okay. All right. Anyway, Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Vasilekos made a lot of the points that I was planning to make. Um, I just would like to point out that last year we did have safety concerns flagged from the times that we didn't have the road closed. So this was just normal weekdays. We had complaints about speeding. We had uh concerns about uh safety for the swans and the geese. Um, we also had someone, a, a couple of times complain about vehicles passing other vehicles in the opposing traffic lane. And the way that this is designed, this road closure, uh, would actually probably eliminate that possibility because the bollards will be placed at such a distance that if you're speeding, you would not be able to dodge through them. So I do think it protects people. Um, I, I think for tourism, I think it's great as well. It is a park after all. And we will be encouraging people to possibly use active transportation to get down to the theater rather than drive their cars. Um, that said, uh, the festival was consulted and they didn't have any issues with either the parking because there, there is no parking affected uh, or the traffic flow, because the majority of the traffic flow from their parking lots will still remain open. Uh, so I think there's a lot of reasons to, to give this a try. Um, it encourages active transportation. It's great for uh reducing climate or reducing greenhouse gas, gas emissions. And, you know, we've declared a climate emergency, so uh, I, I just don't see any reason not to do this really. Um, the other thing that I did think of was that a, a lot of actors and festival uh, employees do actually ride their bikes or walk to work. So this will actually provide a, a safe way for them to get back and forth to work as well, uh, which I think would be appreciated. Uh, other than that, I just, I, I hope that we're gonna take a chance and go ahead with this because I think it's a great opportunity for us to promote active transportation in the, in our community. And it was, so it was well received the last two years that we did it. So I think uh this type of closure is actually better because vehicles will still be able to go through the area. Parking will still be maintained. And uh, it's a solution that should keep everybody happy. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Vasilekos. Or sorry, Counselor Seven, I apologize.
Thank you. So I just had two parts to my question, two different questions. So my first question is for Mr. Crinkler and when the timeline is anticipated for those. And the, the second part is uh to Mr. Fo, just like, sorry, I'll let Mr. Crinkler answer and then I just have follow up, please.
Yeah, through the chair. Uh, in terms of ordering the material, we anticipate a two or three week uh timeline once confirmed. I'm assuming there's a sufficient stock and uh ready, fully available.
Thank you. That's all my follow up from Mr. Fo is sort of, I just had a question about procedurally that this motion sounds it's pretty well identical to the one that was defeated at the last meeting. So I'm just wondering, I know the timeline is a little different, but everything else is the same. I'm just wondering where the, it feels sort of like a gray area. I mean, we just defeat a motion and then put forward one that's slightly different. It feels sort of strange, but I just wondered if you could clarify that a little bit.
Yeah. Mr. Fo, could you uh take Counselor Seven through the procedural bylaw on this?
Uh, so through your worship, yes. So as uh you are all aware, we have a three-step decision-making process. So oftentimes matters begin at subcommittee, subcommittee can make a recommendation to committee, and then committee makes a recommendation often to council. In instances where a motion at committee is defeated, the procedural bylaw provides that the clerk can list a motion to file in order to close the loop on this matter. And a motion to file means to take no action. At council, however, council can choose to file the matter or they can choose to proceed with any motion, which could be the motion from staff, subcommittee, committee or a brand-new motion. And I hope that provides some additional clarification.
Okay, thank you. So just, just so, so if this motion was defeated at council level, then it wouldn't be brought up again, is that correct? But because it was committee, it can be brought up at council?
Yes, if we adopt this report, uh, uh, turn down this recommendation, the motion that's on the floor, uh, then we'd have to follow up the motion to file. If that motion to file carries, then we are one year uh, before we can reconsider this unless two-thirds of the council wish to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And this uh question is through to uh Director Crinkler. Were there any safety concerns uh from our local police services with regards to this proposal?
Uh, to the chair, um, the police services were not contacted to in regards to this report.
All right. We'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion. Opposed, if any. I will vote with those opposed and that will defeat the motion. A motion, then Counselor Clifford. Yes. Motion to file. Seconder. Counselor Seven, discussion. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carried.
Uh, through your worship, is it possible to have a motion just to receive the correspondence from the Active Transportation Advisory Committee that was received earlier?
Yes, Counselor Ingram and second Counselor Henderson seconding. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried.
Returning to your agenda. Item nine point two is the report of the Planning and Heritage Committee, and there are five items listed for consideration. Item nine point two point one is Planning Report Zone Change Amendment Zed zero three dash twenty-two, and that's for four two five three, Perth Line thirty-six. Item nine point two point two uh is four one one zero line thirty-six, Modification to Draft Approved Plan of Subdivision thirty-one T eighteen dash zero zero two and two zone change applications. Item nine point two point three is Proposed Amendments to the Site Plan Approval Delegated Authority Bylaw. Item nine point two point four is Proposed Exemption from Sign Bylaw, Section twelve point O Ground Sign for three three seven Home Street. And item nine point two point five is Assigned Bylaw Variance for the Avon Maitland District School Board. And I would just note Counselor Gaffney declared a community interest on items nine point one point one or nine point two point one and nine point two point two.
If I could, could we have a counselor move nine point two point one and nine point two point two? We'll deal with those first. Counselor Ingram and Counselor Ritzma. Discussion. All right. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Let the record show Counselor Gaffney not take part. Counselor Henderson.
Could we have nine point two five taken separately?
Yes. Do you have a mover then for nine two three and nine two four? Counselor Clifford and Counselor Ritzma. Discussion, Counselor Seven.
All right. Could I take nine point two point three? Could we take that separately as well, please?
Sure. Uh, so we'll start with that. When it's been moved in second, it will just divide the motion or the two items from it. Uh, so it's your discussion on nine two three. All right. All those in favor. Opposed, if any. Opposed, that's carried. Item nine two four is with regard to the signed by law on three three seven Home Street. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, if any. That carries. Nine two five. Counselor Henderson, you're wishing to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the sign after hearing the presentation and seeing how it faces on the street, et cetera. Um, I think it will be a welcome addition to the new school name and the new that's the first I heard about the Golden Bear. So anyway, that's my motion.
Seconders, Counselor Clifford, discussion. Counselor Vasilekos and Counselor Gaffney.
Question around, um, I know these, this sign, quite often it's the light that, that gets the complaints. Are, i- if we, if they, if we were to get a number of complaints because of the size of the sign and, and what I guess is usually called light pollution, i- is there a way to, to go back and just ask them to turn it off between certain hours? Um, or, I mean, some of them are dimmable, but I mean, that might be asking a lot, but would it be possible to, to do something like that, like to, to then go back and say, you know, from eleven till seven, it has to be turned off?
Counselor Ritzma is here. You had your hand.
And, and you're, you're absolutely right. I, I know previously as a principal there, when we made this proposal to, to go with this type and we didn't go with it, but it is dimmable for sure, uh, Counselor Vasilekos. So that I, I really like that idea.
And, and it would be, just to leave it as an option, that if we get, if, if to ask if the school gets complaints from the neighbors or if we receive complaints at this, at the city because of it, that they would consider dimming it or turning off um at, in the, at, at night.
Counselor Henderson, you have your hand.
Do I need to make that part of my motion? I mean, I think the school's gonna be responsible enough to do that if they get phone calls. So that's probably automatically doing that. But should I add that as part of my motion, if there's any complaints, the school will turn it off during sleeping times or something?
Uh, I think what we could do is pass an approval and ask staff to meet with them to talk about mitigation uh, items and they can, they can work on those.
Okay, thanks.
That's acceptable to everyone? All right. It's been moved and seconded and further, Counselor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship, through you. I just wonder if uh, I could just generally ask uh how, how the staff feels about the size of the sign. Like, I know there were, there's a reason they wanna restrict the size. I don't know if it has to do with distracting drivers or something. So I don't, I don't, there's an answer to that. That's a real question.
Uh, Mr. Crinkler would be the responsible director for the department. If he has anything he'd like to add.
Uh, yeah, through the chair. Um in preparation of the twenty twenty sign bylaw, we did compare it to other municipalities. Um, and what we have on our bylaws, but larger than was typically approved. Um, but really the uh, these variations come up for requests, depending on the situation that it, that uh, it happens here today. So um if that, if that answers your question.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Thank you.
All right. Seeing the other hands, Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. Just a question for staff. Is, is, um, there the ability to put a stipulation about dimming the signage on the actual sign permit?
Uh, through the chair and discussion with the permits, uh, we can have discussions with the, the school board uh, what requirements we feel should be in place uh before it's erected.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Now I'll call the question. All those in favor. Opposed, and that's carried.
Item nine point three is the report of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee, and there are four items listed for consideration, and they're item nine point three point one. Festival Hydro Financial Results twenty twenty-one year end and twenty twenty-two Q one. Item nine point three point two, CCO Update Q one to March thirty-first. Item nine point three point three, Q one Operating Budget Variance Report at March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. And item nine point three point four, Q four Operating Budget Variance Report at December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Counselor Bunting, you're moving. Seconders, Counselor Clifford, discussion. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried.
Item ten is Notice of Intent, and there's none scheduled. Moving to item eleven, reading of the bylaws. There are eight bylaws listed for consideration, and they're item eleven point one, Delegation of Authority Regarding Site Plan Agreements. Item eleven point two, amend the zoning bylaw to rezone the lands known municipally as four two five three Perth Line thirty-six. Item eleven point three is to award the tender for the Willow Street uh Water Main Relining Contract. Item eleven point four is to make appointments to Festival Hydro Inc. and Festival Hydro Services Inc. Board of Directors. Item eleven point five is to an acceptance easement uh for storm and sanitary sewers. Item eleven point six is to enter into a temporary road construction and license agreement for the construction of a temporary road extension on McCarthy Road West. Item eleven point seven and eleven point eight are to amend the zoning bylaw. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council present. I would just note, um, Counselor Gaffney's declaration of community interest as well.
And the bylaws, Counselor Gaffney, that those would affect, if you could just clarify and state for us, make sure that we we take them separately.
Uh, eight, eight, uh, seven and eight.
All right. So someone would be willing to move that bylaws eleven, one through six be taken collectively. Counselor Ingram, the seconder, Counselor Seven. Counselor Seven.
Could we take eleven, one separately, please?
Sure. All right. So we'll deal with eleven, two through six. It's been moved by Counselor Ingram, second by Counselor Seven. That bylaws eleven, two, three, four, five and six be taken collectively upon unanimous approval. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's unanimous. We'll go to first and second reading of those bylaws. Counselor Henderson and Counselor Clifford. For bylaws eleven, two, three, four, five and six, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Third and final reading, Counselor BD, Counselor Gaffney seconding. Bylaws eleven, two, three, four, five and six, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's carried. We'll go back to bylaw eleven, one. Uh, would somebody be willing to move first and second reading? Counselor Ritzma and Counselor Ingram, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed. Unopposed, that carries. We'll go to third and final reading of bylaw eleven, one. Counselor Burbak and Counselor Henderson moving in second, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, if any. Unopposed, that carries. We'll go to bylaws eleven, seven, eleven, eight. Move that they be taken collectively. Counselor Clifford and Counselor Vasilekos. All those in favor. That's unanimous. We'll go to first and second reading of bylaws eleven, one, or sorry, eleven, seven and eight. Counselor Bunting and Counselor Vasilekos will move in second. Counselor Gaffney has declared an interest. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Third and final reading. Counselor Ritzma and Counselor BD, moving third and final reading of bylaw eleven point seven, eleven point eight. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. And let the record show Counselor Gaffney did not take part in discussion or voting on that. And I'm clerk.
Item twelve is consent agenda. Are there any items listed on the consent agenda to be considered by council?
Seeing none.
Item thirteen is new business. Are there any new business items?
Thank you. I, I had a phone conversation today with one of our business owners and um, he followed up with an email that he asked that I read out tonight. So I'm about to do that and I apologize. There's two separate emails here. I'm gonna go um from one to the next. Uh, he starts off saying, this is a letter in response to a conversation with you this afternoon. Been made aware of a proposal to continue the patio boardwalk program indefinitely. This is not a good idea for the majority of non-hospitality businesses in the downtown. There are many reasons to discontinue the program. First, the patio extensions block visibility and access to adjacent retail shops. Most of the restaurants make an effort to close the space in as their own by placing signs, decoration and decorative plants or partitions. Owners of restaurants have demonstrated little or no regard for the neighboring shops by attempting to block them from view. Secondly, congestion of pedestrian traffic also creates problems for retail businesses in the area. Many shops have lines developed through their access points. These gather at different times with the result of adding to the chaos of people moving in and out of my store. Other business owners have had similar issues on Ontario Street. Thirdly, boardwalks create a safety hazard for pedestrians and traffic. Ontario Street is a four-lane highway. I have witnessed close calls with cars and pedestrians by narrowing the sidewalk and moving the foot traffic closer to motor vehicles. This in itself should reduce the size of the patio to allow for normal passage. Bicycle traffic has been noticed on the sidewalk. There does not appear to be any enforcement for the cyclists. Finally, the sidewalks and parking spaces prior to COVID represented a fair balance between pedestrians and traffic on Ontario Street. By extending the patios, safety and comfort have been sacrificed. The patios have usurped the space at the expensive The patios have usurped the space at the expensive safety. If safety is not considered seriously, then fairness and application of common spaces should be a concern. Prior to COVID, the allotted space for patios had been considered sufficient for restaurants. The current pandemic numbers and spread do not represent the need for these emergency measures to be extended. The emergency is over. It had been a worry of retail businesses that once implemented, restaurant owners would love to retain this privilege. This was a temporary measure. I would like to remind you and City Council that these measures were implemented at the expense of retail. And the burden was on the backs of these retail businesses. For example, due to lack of consultation, I discovered 11 of 13 parking spots gone on Wellington Street. No one discussed, consulted or studied the area until after I complained. I lost sales. Surveys to all affected businesses should have been an opportunity to avoid concerns. And all businesses should be compensated for losses when one sided proposals are adopted. I would also like to know how this committee was selected. I would like to see better guidelines on how representing, representation is decided. It did not look very fair to me. It is time to return to the status quo we knew and operated by in 2018. I can say my business is approach, approaching pre-COVID numbers and restaurants are full. So the idea of expanding the patios and boardwalks beyond 2022 should be rejected. The emergency is over. My name is Wayne Rio. I own Diamond Dogs Vinyl at 114th Ontario Street. In the future, I would like to be consulted by the city and the BIA before changes to the business area is considered.
Thank you. Anything further? Just had one item of new business. There was some concern raised about the voters list in municipality and whether or not it was current. And I think it's important for us to get this out. And I know communication staff will put it out. But under the municipal act, the election or the, sorry, the preparing of electors lists in the 444 municipalities in the province is the responsibility of MPAC Municipal Property Assessment Corporation. And of course, it is not a great process. It is deficient. Both MPAC and the Association of Municipal Clerks and Treasures have petitioned previous provincial governments to move forward with changing that. An interesting thing to think about is we just had a provincial election where on Elections Ontario prepared a voters list, a current voters list that they're not allowed to share with the 444 municipalities, which doesn't make a lot of sense. The city of Stratford is not permitted to do an enumeration. So what we have to rely on is voter lookup.ca. And we will be advertising and asking people to go on voter lookup.ca to make sure that they are on the voters list. And that is how the MPAC list, which is provided to all 444 municipalities, has to be updated for this provincial election or this municipal election. It is noted that starting in 2024 that the province, the previous government, the last session of the legislature has moved forward to look at taking over the voters list and making changes. But they were not in a place to do so before this falls municipal election. So while it's not a perfect situation and I appreciate everyone's concerns, I want them to know that the municipalities of Ontario through AMO, MPAC and the Association Municipal Clerks and Treasures have asked for this to be changed and will be for the 2026 municipal election. I also note that some of the information that's on social media, this information I've just provided has been provided to some of the posters. It hasn't been put up yet, but I do know that the, the city's communication staff will make sure that it's done so that it's out there for everyone to see. And I just thought it was important to say that now so that anyone watching can go to voter lookup.ca and make sure they're on our voters list. And if I've missed anything, I'll let the clerk answer. And then I see Counselor Henderson's.
Yes, I think some of the clarification that also should be added is that somebody can come to either the clerk's office or go on the voter.ca or they can come to the Rotary Complex where we usually have internet or phone voting. And they can still register there. And what is the deadline for that? I understand they can vote almost right up to the end of the voting day on October 24th, but I want to double check.
Mr. Phil.
So through Your Worship, so members of the public can check to see if they're on the voters list or amend their information through voter lookup.ca. And that's until the end of August, starting September 1st all the way to October 24th at 8pm. Members of the public can get added to the voters list by attending the clerk's office or during the voting period, either at the voter help desk, which will be the clerk's office, or the voter help center, which will be the Rotary Complex. We have posted a variety of information on our website and we're going to be continuing to update it as we approach the municipal election. And then we'll also be communicating this through various platforms throughout the entire process. And if anyone has any questions, they can certainly reach out to the clerk's office and elections@stratford.ca via email. We're happy to assist and answer any questions that we can.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. If not, I take a motion to adjourn to convene a standing committee, Counselor Clifford and Counselor Burbak. Thank you. All those in favor? Post, any? And that's Carrie. We'll now move into Planning and Heritage.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to call the Planning and Heritage meeting to order. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interests? Seeing none. Item three, delegations, none scheduled. Item four, report of the planner, 4.1, Planning Report Zone Change Amendment Z02-22 with regards to the municipal address of 385 West Gore Street. And I believe Ms. Ebony is available to give a staff presentation. There you are. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, through the Chair, the application being heard today is Z02-22 for the lands located at 385 West Gore Street. The zone change application Z02-22 was submitted by Jordan and Shelby Hale on behalf of Hale Housing Inc. The proposed zone change amendment is to rezone the lands from a residential second density R21 zone to a residential third density R3 zone with special provisions to allow the existing dwelling to be converted into a quadruplex dwelling with a minimum front yard depth of 5.4 meters, a minimum lot frontage of 20 meters for a quadruplex dwelling and a minimum side yard of 1.2 meters for a quadruplex dwelling with a minimum rear yard setback to a parking area of 1.1 meters. Finding best justification report, a conceptual site plan, building elevations and a functional servicing letter were submitted in support of the application. Subject property is designated residential area in the official plan. The designation permits a range of residential uses, uses including triplex, triplex dwellings, townhouse dwellings and low rise apartments. The maximum permitted density in the residential area designation is 65 units per hectare. As a part of the city's growth management and intensification strategy, the official plan supports the review of existing zoning regulations and other development standards to remove barriers to intensification. These standards include parking and setback requirements. The intensification strategy also states a city intensification target of 25% for citywide residential growth within the existing built boundary. The requested setback reductions are to recognize the existing building and the proposed parking lot configuration. And it would allow for additional dwelling units in a residential area that contributes to achieving the residential intensification target. The proposed development contributes to a range of housing types and choice on a collector's street. And the scale of the proposed development respects the massing and density of other buildings along West Gore and McCulloch Street. And the proposed elevation is compatible with the character in the neighborhood. A privacy fence is being proposed along the interior and rear lot lines to increase the privacy between adjacent property owners. The proposed amendment conforms to the official plan policies by allowing for adequate servicing of the units, respecting the height, massing and density of the neighborhood through the setting of the proposed addition to ensure that there's no negative impacts with respect to privacy, shadowing setbacks and providing adequate parking on site. The lands are zoned residential, second residential second density R21 zone. And the zoning of the lands to a site specific R3 special zone would allow for the existing dwelling to be converted into a quadruplex dwelling. The site specific regulations for a quadruplex dwelling relate to parking, lot frontage and setbacks. These requirements are to ensure that the property can accommodate additional dwelling units while ensuring that amenity space, traffic and neighborhood characteristics as well as compatible compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood is maintained. If approved, the owner will be required to submit a site plan application for approval for the quadruplex dwelling before a building permit can be issued. Engineering services have noted that a road widening will be required on the West Gore frontage as part of the site plan approval. The application maintains the general intent of the zoning bylaw. The application was circulated to internal and external agencies on April 13th, 2022. The following comments were received as a result of the circulation. Building services in the fire department had no concerns with the application. Canada Post provided comments on the service type and location of mail for the property. Engineering services had no objection, but addressed that they needed a 1.44 meter road widening from the West Gore frontage. A notice of application was sent to 97 abutting property owners on April 12th, 2022. The notice was also included in the town crier and the Beacon Herald on April 15th, 2022. Three responses have been received from residents in the area and three delegations also expressed similar concerns at the public meeting. The first issue that was raised was around the potential for increased traffic in the area. The applicant has submitted a concept plan that shows how the property can accommodate the required four parking spaces for a quadruplex dwelling on the property. Engineering services have not identified any traffic or parking related issues with this property. And the West Gore Street and McCulloch Street will remain below the traffic volume capacity on both streets. The zoning bylaw allows for, allows a tenant or owner to park one commercial vehicle on the property provided that it does not exceed the length of six meters or a vehicle height of 2.3 meters. And the submitted concept plan would not provide for the parking of a recreational vehicle within the proposed parking area. The city has not received complaints about parking infractions on the subject lands. The property is able to provide the required parking for the intended land use, which will alleviate off-street parking in the immediate vicinity. If complaints are received in the future, bylaw enforcement will attend the property and enforce the zoning bylaw. Another issue that was raised was around privacy and fencing. An existing wood fence provides privacy for the adjacent neighbors. The requested reduction in the interior side yard setback is intended to recognize the existing building. The proposed addition is shown to meet the R3 zoning bylaw requirements. And planning staff are recommending that the interior side yards is reduced for the existing building only. Another issue raised was highlighted, or another issue was highlighted was around site plan control. The applicant will be required to obtain site plan approval for the proposed quadruplex dwelling. Plans submitted with the site plan application will be required to address drainage and snow removal on the property and to ensure that there's no increased water runoff onto adjacent properties as a result of the development. Further, the applicant has the same responsibility as any property owner where they're expected to prevent any damage to adjacent properties and are liable for any damage that may occur. Issues around neighborhood character were also raised. Should a quadruplex be proposed on the subject lands? The applicant would be required to obtain site plan approval. The change in zoning would allow for an increase in building height from 10 meters to 12 meters. Building elevations will be reviewed as part of the process. And the developer will be encouraged to use materials that are compatible with the surrounding area. Preliminary elevations show an increased height, but didn't, does not include balconies with the building addition. Rezone applications, rezoning applications are analyzed on a case by case basis. And the Planning Act allows for a property owner to submit applications such as consents and rezonings for any property in the city. Issues around property values were also highlighted. Comments were received that expressed concerns that the proposal will substantially reduce property values within the area. The provincial policy statement and the official plan encourage intensification using existing land and infrastructure to achieve intensification. According to the municipal guide for responding to NIMBY, prepared by affordability and choice today, studies were completed across North America that found that there were no negative impacts of affordable housing on housing prices. The zoning bylaw amendment Z02-22 is consistent with PPS, conforms with the city's official plan and the intent of the zoning bylaw. It's, it's consistent with the city's strategic priorities and represents good planning. I recommend that. I recommend that application Z02-22 to amend the zoning bylaw at 385 West Gore Street from a residential second density R21 zone to a residential third density zone with site specific regulations be approved for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the provincial policy statement. The request is in conformity with the goals, objectives and policies of the official plan. The zone change will provide for a development that is appropriate for the lands. And public, the public was consulted during the application circulation and comments have been reviewed in writing or at the public meeting. Considered and analyzed within the planning report. And that council passed a resolution that no further notice is required under section 3417 of the Planning Act. That is all that I have for you formally today, but I'm available to answer any questions through the Chair. And the applicants are also available to answer questions.
Thank you for that thorough presentation. Questions for the planner? Counselor Henderson, I see your hand.
I was just wondering at our last meeting at the open house there, some things were brought up about a trailer parked on the lawn and parking on the road across from the driveway. And I know the gentleman that was in attendance said he was going to look into that. Do you know if any of that's been fixed already?
With the Chair, so the planner Jeff looked into the parking issue and the bylaw allows for you to park a recreational vehicle on your property up to a maximum of six meters in length and 2.3 meters in height. If you look at the parking area presented on the plan, a recreational vehicle wouldn't fit within the space there. Further to that, our bylaw does not provide, it does not prohibit the owner of a property from parking on their own property. What might result from that would be that individuals in the units park on the street. And then that would be an issue dealt with by, by law enforcement.
Oh, I'm confused. I thought I had looked into something like this for somebody else that lived on a different property. And the people had parked on their lawn and they had to move it to their driveway that it was allowable to be on the driveway, but not on the grass. Is that different in a backyard or something?
You would be able to park a recreational vehicle on, on your driveway. However, given the size of the driveway proposed, a recreational vehicle of that size would not fit and would not be permitted.
So they're still allowed to park on the grass then?
No.
Oh, that's what I mean. Like is that been addressed yet? Have they stopped that? Because it was still sitting there the other day. So I just wondered when the landlord, I think it was, or the guy that had bought the building, he had said he was going to take care of that.
My understanding, I believe it has been, but that is a question that I am uncertain of.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Seven, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you. I just had a question. I wondered if you could explain or just lay out the differences of the setbacks that are being proposed here compared to the setbacks that are normally in an R3 zone?
Yeah, so the the setbacks that they're requesting for the existing building are just to recognize the the, the, the situ, the, the situation of the existing building. The only setback that would be different for the proposed structure is the rear lot line setback, which requires that a parking area be 1.5 meters from the rear lot line. And they're requesting to reduce it to 1.1 meters.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Anything further? Thank you. Moving to the next item, then, there is a motion that the correspondence from Thomas and Sandra Hunter, he received, that was received on June the 21st regarding the zone change amendment Z022 for 385 West Gore, be received for information, and also in tonight's addendum, there was a correspondence from Roger Cale. A mover for that. Thank you, Counselor Ingram, second by Counselor Vassilakos. Discussion. Seeing none, I recall the question, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Moving down to the next item, is there, there is a motion that the delegation of Jordan and Shelby Hale and Susan Mullen, who's be heard regarding zone change amendment Z02-22 for 4385 West Gore. A motion to receive that moved by Counsel Spurback, seconded by Counsel Bunting. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. And Madam Clerk, I'll turn it over to you to bring in our first delegation.
However, having me, I would just like to start by saying that the existing building is already a duplex.
So is that clear through the rest of council? The audio? Just gonna. Madam Clerk, you're okay with the audio?
Through the chair, yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Hale, thank you.
The existing dwelling is actually a duplex. And so what we are actually wanting to do is actually create two more units to complete the quadruplex. So I just want you guys to know that we're not going from just a single-family dwelling to a quadplex, we're going from a duplex to a quadplex. Since the last public meeting, I discussed with our tenants that the parking issue do do require them to park their vehicles in the driveway. We do have the parking there, and the issue before was just that their staff for community living, who is the tenant in the basement unit, tend to just park on the road so they can use the staff vehicle that is parked in the driveway. Before I've. And and the issue has gotten much, much better, in my opinion. And in fact, I also wanted to state that sometimes it's not just my tenants' vehicles on the road, it's it's other neighboring vehicles on roads as well. And moving forward, the. We aren't trying to basically, we're not trying to make the neighborhood look any different than it is now, except for improve it. We have a current detached garage on site, which is very, very old, and we will, we plan to remove that when this rezoning gets approved and we have a site plan approve approval. And we just basically are looking to put an addition on the existing building, which will look very similar to what's there, which I'm sure you guys were able to see in our concept plan. And that's all I have to mention today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hale? Seeing none, thank you, Jordan. Moving forward, I'll ask the clerk to bring in this Miss Mullin. There you are, Susan, go right ahead. Thank you. Make sure you're unmuted, please.
Good evening, Mayor Matheson and councilors. On behalf of the neighbors, there are a lot of senior citizens that do not have, do not actually do well talking to city. Sorry, I keep getting messages here from you. Is my internet stable? It's telling me my internet's unstable. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, so I'm speaking on behalf of a group of neighbors and our concerns again, we are doubling the size of this unit, and I'm very familiar with affordable housing. I know that you brought up the comment about affordable housing. This is not affordable housing, as we're well aware. These units are going to rent for 1800 probably to 2000 a month, which is the going rate in the city right now. But our biggest concern is the people who purchased their homes in this neighborhood and expected that our zoning bylaws were going to protect them. And that's what zoning bylaws do, as we are all aware, protect the neighbors. So just wanted to bring that up again. And also, there has been precedent set. Once you take this into consideration and you do this, we have four corners within that whole block that what's to stop them all from becoming a fourplex in that tiny little block, which is already very congested. There are still work trailers coming and going on the property at 385 West Gore. It has not improved. If anything, it has gotten gotten worse. And yes, the parking for that street is also other neighbors, because as we brought up before, there is no parking on West Gore. So you're increasing the volume of traffic in that area. Our other main concern is the fact that we don't have any number of bedrooms and bathrooms. All you have is a site plan, and we have gone back to the planner and asked, is it three bedrooms you're putting into each unit? How many bathrooms in each unit? That does affect the number of people there. Currently at night, if you drive by the house, there are four vehicles parked in the driveway. So that tells us that the upper unit already has four people that are occupying that unit. So whether there's supposed to be four people or not, there is. And our concern as neighbors is that who's monitoring this? Who's going to pay attention to this? It's already a problem. When he purchased it, it was already a problem, and now we want to double that problem for the neighbors. So number one, the precedent in the city, if we can do this in this neighborhood, does that mean that we're going to do that everywhere throughout the city? And I know we need to intensify. I know we desperately need housing. We need the right housing. We need affordable housing, and we need housing that's that's in the right area. So there are areas for housing. So on behalf of the neighbors, I'd like to ask the councilors to please consider not approving this plan. And that's what the neighbors have asked me to do. Thank you. And we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any questions, Counselor Ingram?
I don't have any questions. I have I have more related comments. So there have been a number of cases heard at the Human Rights Tribunal and at higher, much higher levels of government than what we are regarding zoning for people and the ability to restrict the number of occupants within a unit. That's not something that we can do. It's not something we can do through a zoning bylaw. It's not something that we can regulate. So we, you know, we can't control the number of people that are housed within a unit. It may very well be a three-bedroom unit, but they could very well have a set of triplets living in or or sleeping in one bedroom, and that's okay. So that's it's not something that that we can control as a municipality. The the other thing is that, you know, with the push on for intensification and for housing, it it's not necessarily going to be affordable. That's not something that the provincial government has, you know, really set out in all of their direction to provide housing. We've talked around affordable housing, the province has talked around affordable housing, and everybody wants to be able to attain safe housing. But from the direction and the push that is going to come from from all of these regulations, it is not going to be affordable. It is just going to be housing. And until we get better policies in place that really protect the of the market and and dictate that it be affordable, this is just, this is where we're at. And there really is no area of the city that is fully protected, because every property owner has the right to submit an application. So it could be my next-door neighbor, it could be Mayor Matheson's next-door neighbor, it could be across the street from Counselor Beatty. Anywhere in the city, they have the right to make this application, and and so no, no area of the city is protected as people like to think they are. And those are just my comments.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Ingram. Any further questions or comments? I go ahead, Miss Mullin.
I just want to make a comment regarding decisions the council has made in properties that were asked for increased units. And we we know some of the addresses that that those were considering 396 Ontario Street. If we could talk about that, we all know that as the golden bamboo, and that is definitely a site that could have moved forward quickly with housing and could be more suitable to housing needed. It's also a highway artery. And also. 173 Huron Street, which applied for an extra unit at 173 Huron Street, and that became a huge issue again, and the two units were approved, but the third one was not, which it did get put in anyway. And so those are areas that are the main highway areas. This is a residential zone that is mainly R1, small bungalows, and it's a very congested street already with parking issues and issues going on in that residential zone. So just wanted to point that out, that precedent has been set previously that don't zoning places, we could build housing that would work really well, including Ontario Street, 396 Ontario, that's a nice store that we could have fixed 20 years ago, and the unit at 173 Huron Street. So we're setting precedent in our neighborhood to do this to to an area like that. I'm all for affordable housing, and all of you know that, but this is not affordable, and this is putting in a fourplex in an area that's all R1 zoning, and we have three more in the block that people have already been approached and asked. Like to that, we could end up with four. So I just want you to think about that.
Thank you.
That's that's all.
Mayor Matheson, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Well, if the presentation's done, I just, I wanted to make a point of order. If we're done the presentation, then council can discuss it amongst ourselves. We don't normally enter into a debate with the presenter.
So if there's no further questions, thank you, Ms. Mullin. And we're going to move down to item number, our next item, which is the staff recommendation at the bottom of page two. Counselor Clifford, will you move staff recommendation?
Yes.
And a second. Thank you, Counselor Gaffney. Further discussion. Counselor Seven.
Thank you. So I just, you know, things like this, I find somewhat difficult sometimes. I think for me, I mean, looking at the that this particular site, I mean, there's certainly a big tree that is going to have to be removed, but aside from that, I think, I try and look at this in my perspective, if if somebody bought that property and applied to build what essentially this is, is a second home on that property, you know, it's bigger than the footprint of the one that's there, it's going to be beside it, more or less, you know, I would hope that we wouldn't even be considering it. And I think it there's, I don't know, I think I think it's council's job. We put we put in, the official plan is there, the zoning bylaws are there, the setback requirements are all there, and then it's council's job as a final say to to decide whether or not, if things go through those stages, should council approve it or not. And I think, you know, for this one, I don't support the change. I think, I think, you know, really, if you're buying, you know, I worry about the precedent of properties being purchased, homes being purchased, duplexes, triplexes, and then, you know, the expectation, it almost seems is that if there's a proposal forward to change the zoning or to add units or whatever, that, I mean, the precedent, certainly the history of things coming to council is that they will be approved. And so I think, I think the default should be that if I buy a property that's R1, I shouldn't expect it to be to be changed. And I'm not, I'm not saying that is the expectation in this case. I'm not trying to, you know, this is just, I think we should, we should defend the zoning that's there for a reason, and I think in a lot of cases, you know, we, it is our job, it is council has the final say to sort of protect the the interests of neighborhoods and the expectations and, you know, the the notion that that people's homes and their properties and their neighborhoods are not as protected as they think they are. Well, I think that that is, that is our role. That is the zoning bylaw, that's the official plan, you know, the provincial policy statements, and a lot of that seems to be interpretation, that seems to be subjective, and I think, I think, you know, we need to analyze everything that comes through on individual basis, but I think, you know, I think, anyway, I guess, to wrap it up, I just don't support the proposal, so.
Thank you, Counselor Seven. Counselor Henderson, did I see your hand?
Yes, I did. I was just wondering, these changes that are coming through, we just had official plan amendments, and then the province directed all the municipalities to start using more of their green space, et cetera. And there's been a lot of changes where people can now, you know, put, I call them mother-in-law suites in the basement, or they can put additions on, as long as they meet the fire code and the safety code. Things like this, will this be, once the zoning changes have all passed formally, and I can't remember if they've been at the final or just dropped, will something like this just be automatic?
I'm not sure if the director can respond to that.
Yeah, so the Chair of Counselor Henderson could rephrase the question. I'm not sure I entirely understood.
Basically, what I'm asking is with the new official plan and the new zoning changes and everything we're doing, and it allows people to, you know, build in their house and put additions on and different things to accommodate people and, you know, to build up instead of out and saving green space, et cetera. And it's supposed to also help, you know, with more accommodations, the event that's supposed to lead to more affordable houses. But with something like this, where somebody's going to come and build, take a duplex and make it a quad, just be automatic under those zoning, or will it still have to come for a change?
To the Chair, there's no intent to change the process that's currently in place. I think we might be referring to is the site plan approval process. This is what is not in discussion here with a zone change.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, I mean, Mayor Matheson.
My question is for staff. When we look at the building envelope that's proposed, where do we end up on lot coverage versus what's permitted? Are we far outside of the envelope that's normally in place?
Ms. Ivany?
Through the Chair, the proposal meets lot coverage and exceeds lot area. It also meets landscape open space requirements.
Counselor Clifford?
I I support the motion on the floor, because we are encouraged to have intensification. And the other thing, we, like, we have trained, like, municipal staff that have looked at this, and it is a staff recommendation. I, as a counselor, I don't have time to, and I don't have expertise to be an expert in this, but we do hire, we hire municipal staff that help us with this. So I, I think it is, it's going to happen a lot more, and eventually, as we have more housing, I think the price of housing, if we don't have more housing, it's going to keep going up. So as we can encourage more housing, the chances of the prices are coming down. I think it could help, quite frankly. It isn't going to be affordable as some people want, but I think it's going to help the marketplace as we have a lot more houses and accommodations for people.
Thank you. Counselor Ingram?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate that our, our staff, who is a professional planner and does have their designation, they have found that the request is consistent with the provincial policy statement and their official plan. So they have evaluated both of those documents and found that the application does comply.
Thank you. So the recommendation, staff recommendation has been moved in second. If there's nothing further, I'll call the question all in favor. Opposed, if any? Want to pose, and that's Carrie. Thank you. Moving on to five, four point two, planning report, draft plan of condominium application 31 CDM 22-002 for the municipal address of 84 Church Street. And once again, I'm going to ask Ms. Ivany to make the staff presentation.
Director Crinklaw will be presenting this application.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Yeah, to the Chair, let's give me a second while I try to get this presentation up. Hopefully, I'm successful this time. Did that work?
Thank you very much. Yes, you're ready to go.
I lost an area. Okay. Thank you. The report writer for this today is attending as a son's grade 12 graduation, so I'll be the one presenting this report. As please note that the planner for the proponent, Ms. Baker, is available for questions after this presentation. So we're here today to consider approval for the plan of condominium for 84 Church Street. The draft plan of condominium application was deemed complete on April 11th, 2022. For lands known municipally as 84 Church Street, the subject property is located on the west side of Church Street between St. Patrick Street and St. David Street. The Rose draft plan contains a total of five residential units. The remainder of the plan is proposed to be common elements that include parking spaces, store space, landscape areas, corridors, and stairwells. The site characteristics consist of five existing unit apartment dwelling units with a frontage of 28 meters and depth of 31 meters for total area of 868 square meters. The surrounding land uses include the north residential, east vacant commercial, south commercial, and the west residential. The building proposed for condominium ownership is existing and utilizes existing municipal infrastructure. Sufficient off-street parking in a many areas provided on subject lands and existing infrastructure is in place to support the proposed land use. The provincial policy statement supports the developments of which efficiently uses land, resources, infrastructure, and public service facilities. The condominium conversion of this existing apartment building would contribute to the continuation of a mix of land uses in the neighborhood that is located within a short distance to a public transit route. The proposal allows for intensification of lands on a fully municipal services which exist and have sufficient capacity to accommodate the residential use. The proposed draft condominium is consistent with the 2020 provincial policy statement. The subject property is designated residential area in the official plan. This designation permits a range of residential uses, including triplex dwellings, townhouse dwellings, and low-rise apartments. The official plan recognizes the need to protect the viability of the community by ensuring that a full range of housing types designed to meet occupancy, health and safety standards, tenure, form and affordability for the current and future residents. The proposed development contributes to a range of housing types and choices that are near the central business district. The scale of the development respects the massing and density of other buildings along Church Street. Fencing exists along the rear parpal line, and as there are no changes being made to the exterior facade, the building, it will continue to be compatible with the character in this neighborhood. As a result, there are no additional impacts to privacy of adjacent residences as a result of the proposed plan of condominium. Plans of condominium must create a minimum number of units appropriate to allow for a reasonable independent operation of the condominium corporation. The proposed draft plan of condominium will allow for the reasonable independent operation of condominium corporation. The subject property is owned residential fifth density in the city zoning bylaw, and an apartment building is a permitted use. The site plan agreement for the existing five unit apartment building was registered on November 30th, 1993. Although the subject property does not meet the existing density and parking requirements in the current zoning bylaw, the property still complies with the site plan agreement, and the proposed condominium conversion will not require changes to the number of dwelling units and parking spaces. The draft plan of condominium includes five store spaces and five parking spaces as part of the common element. The proposed draft plan of condominium with five legal non-conforming dwelling units and parking spaces will continue to meet the zoning bylaw requirements. Draft plan of condominium conditions were sent to the applicant on June 9th, 2022. This report was circulated to various internal and external agencies, which are listed in the report. The one that I'll mention is the engineering department requires an easement over the storm arch along the western lines of the property, which was included in the, the council early in the day. So in terms of a recommendation that the City of Stratford pursuant to section 51 subsection 31 of the planning grant draft approval to plan of condominium 31 CDM 22002, subject to the conditions listed in the planning report for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the provincial policy statement and the request conforms to goals, objectives, and policies of the official plan. And that's the summary of my report. Any questions?
I see Counselor Henderson. Go ahead.
I have two things. So the people that currently live there, is this something that can just be added on to them? I'm not sure if you know the answer to that. And my second question is, there's been quite a few coming forward and asking for to change, usually new buildings, changing to adding condominiums. And I believe it was Council Ingram one time mentioned about the fact that I'm not sure exactly how it works, but you have to have a certain percentage. I think it's available houses. You can't go below a certain, or if you go above a certain percentage, then you can deny people coming forward with condominiums. I can't really remember what it was about, but I remember that. I think it was our two and three bedroom moral plan, or bed, one bedroom was closed or something like that. I'm not sure if you have the answer for that or not. And Counselor Ingram can probably straighten me out here on what I'm trying to say. Thanks.
I'll turn it over to Director Crinklaw.
To the Chair, as noted in the report writer, he indicated that there is sufficient units to suffice having a condominium corporation.
Thank you.
No, I meant, I meant like, can they just put that on somebody that's already renting there?
Through the Chair, Ms. Baker will also be available after. Who might be able to better respond to that question?
Okay, thanks. And then the other part, the percentage was okay. Is that what you're saying? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Counselor Ingram.
Thank you for Director Crinklaw. Are you by default the city's manager of planning?
Through the Chair, as I oversee those services, I am responsible for what is my service.
Okay, so all of the conditions, if we don't have somebody in this position, then the conditions being cleared would be to your satisfaction as opposed to the city's manager of planning?
Yeah, through the Chair, through our delegate authority bylaw, I'm often included as part of that scope.
Thank you. And then my next question also for the Director is I don't see any condition related or condition included in here that should staff have to consult with legal that the cities be reimbursed for any legal disbursements and related fees? Is that something that we generally add in?
Through the Chair, in other development applications, we do have some of that language. I'm not sure if the intent was to have it included here or not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none. The next item is a motion to hear Ms. Baker with regards to the condominium application of mover for such. Thank you, Counselor Vassilakos, second of the council. We're back. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Ms. Baker, are you available? There you are. Go ahead.
Good evening. I apologize. Zoom took a few moments there to click over. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll certainly keep it brief. Firstly, I would note that we are in support of the conditions, but certainly understand Counselor Ingram's condition. Should that be added to the list? I just also want to follow up on Counselor Henderson's comments regarding vacancy rates. I believe what you're referencing in certain municipalities, they have requirements in their official plan when you can convert a residential rental unit to a condominium unit. So a number of the applications you've probably seen over the last few months, a few of them for poor quality homes, those have been new construction, so they're not considered a conversion. Nobody is living in them. In this case, this would be a conversion from rental to ownership. Tenants are provided the first right of refusal on the opportunity to purchase the units, so they do get or are afforded that right. But in the City of Stratford, there are no policies in the official plan that prohibit and/or, I guess I should say, control the conversion from a rental to a condominium. So there's no test in the City of Stratford that vacancy rates, I, Counselor Ingram can probably correct me, but they're typically around 3% depending on the municipality. But Stratford doesn't have those specific policies as a test for this type of application. And I think if there's any other further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counselor Clifford, I see your hand.
Yeah, what, what Counselor Henderson brought up, if I'm a tenant in that house, Ms. Baker, and I'm not going to buy it, is there, is there a time that, obviously, the province has laws, but could you explain to what happens if a tenant isn't going to buy the condominium? Is there a certain time that tenant has, or if you could help me with that? I am curious.
Through the Chair, that will be regulated through the Tenancies Act, and they're first given notice of first right of refusal. They would then have to indicate that they do not have an interest to purchase. I apologize. I'm not sure the certain number of days. But I believe in order to terminate a tenancy, there is a certain notice, whether it's one or two months, that would have to be given before they would have to, to vacate. There is, of course, also the potential that somebody could buy a unit and rent it out, and having a renter already in the unit would actually potentially be very attractive to a purchaser.
Further questions or comments? Counselor Henderson.
Well, I find this very discouraging. I don't know, disheartening, I guess, because I, I see lots of times people are saying that people are selling their homes and they're having to move out. And of course, those people are paying maybe six, seven, $800 a month rent. And where can they find a place to go and live? So now we're going to have somebody come and ask to have this done. And if the people that live there, they probably have a more reasonable rent than anybody else in the city, are not going to be sort of forced out of their place because possibly they won't be able to afford to buy them. And I, I guess with what's going on in the housing market and everything right now, I just feel I can't support something like this. It's like it's basically evicting people because you're deciding to switch them over to condominiums. And I understand people have the right to sell their property on that. But I believe we have the right that we can turn down that they can't be condominiums. Can somebody explain that to me if that's true or not?
I'll turn it back to Ms. Baker. I see your hand.
Thank you. Through the Chair to Counselor Henderson. Not sure if it assists, but the rental rates are certainly higher than that in this, in this building. There are one and two bedrooms, I believe, are between 1,500 and 2,000. So maybe just a note on the current affordability of the existing units. Professionally, as a land use planner, the application, in my opinion, and in keeping the staff recommendations, is that the draft plan of condominium does conform to the official plan and does comply with the zoning bylaw to permit the proposed application.
Anything further, Counselor Ingram?
And, and just, just a note for council as well, that this is no different than any other development application, in that if we were to refuse the application, the developer or the applicant would have the ability to appeal.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing further, thank you very much, Ms. Baker.
Thank you.
And moving down, Counselor Gaffney, I see your hand.
I was going to move the, move the recommendations, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And a second for the recommendation. Mayor Matheson, thank you. Discussion. Counselor Ingram.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment that we include a condition that any legal cost and disbursements be reimbursed by the applicant, please.
Is the mover and second fine with that amendment, friendly amendment?
For sure, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mayor Matheson.
I will, if it's our standard practice. I just want to make sure. Could Mr. Crinklaw confirm that?
Mr. Crinklaw.
To the Chair, like I said earlier, I'm not sure the intent of the recommendation that was put here before. I know in past, we do have covered legal fees for a developed application. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's the, the case here.
Mayor Matheson, a follow-up?
That's fine. I'll also continue to allow the friendly amendment.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, the staff recommendation with the friendly amendment has been moved and seconded. I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any? And I believe that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on, and our final item is, I believe, a motion to adjourn. Counselor Bunty will move, seconded by Counselor Beatty. Thank you. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rizma. Council reconvened at this time, and I'll turn it back.
For your worship, item 15.1 is declarations of pecuniary interests. Were there any declarations made at standing committee to be restated at the reconvene portion?
Seeing none.
Item 15.2 is reading of the bylaws, and there's one bylaw listed for consideration, and that's bylaw 11.9, the confirmatory bylaw. It requires first and second reading and third and final reading.
Move first and second reading, Counselor Vassilakos and Counselor Clifford. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Third and final reading, Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Henderson, the confirmatory bylaw. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. And a motion to adjourn this evening's proceedings, Counselor Ingram and Counselor Burbach. All those in favor? And that's Carrie. Thank you. Have a good evening.